Okay, it's six o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We'll start the meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming out, everybody, on such a nice night. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Dan, any additions or corrections?
I do not have any.
Okay, Dwayne?
For me?
Nope.
Nope.
Alright, nope. Okay, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda, everything's in the packet on that. All the evaluations were done there, and then on the conferences, thank you for putting the dollar amounts on there that were budgeted. So, I know Dan asked about that before. Any questions for the administrator on the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Under visitors of council, American Legion regarding fencing proposal.
Including your packet tonight, you've got some information that the planning commission actually reviewed. The ladies are here tonight to talk about a little bit. You've got a couple of items there, overhead shot, kind of a map that was submitted, as well as kind of a description of the proposal, so. She's gonna pass some things out, and certainly, please state your name for the record.
Hi, Deb O'Connor, representing the Cassin Legion. And we're here tonight to request an amendment to the previously approved patio area. When it was approved, it was approved for a six-foot fence with permanent fencing. And our reasoning for coming forward today is we, because of just some unknowns, we've done some of our own investigating. And the first thing that we did, and you can see it's attached on here, is an email. The second sheet that has a little bit more to it, that's red and black, is an email conversation that took place between me and Mike McManus. And he's at the state level. He's alcohol enforcement. He's a supervisor up there. And I was forwarded to him with some questions, because one of the statements that we were concerned about was whether or not our fence could, had to be permanent, if it got taken down, would be able to still have our license, if it was removed and turned into, at wintertime, a parking lot. And through the conversation, if you skip the long paragraph, that point was asked, and he said, most definitely. It doesn't need to, first of all, the state doesn't require fences. That's at the city's ordinance. And so permanency has no effect in regards to the state level. And I asked if we could take it down. He said, would it affect our license? And he said, no, as long as the city has it on record, the size that it's supposed to be. So it doesn't affect at the state level, so it comes back to the city's ordinances. Now, I've gone through the ordinances a number of times, and I have, I was told that it's a six-foot ordinance for a fence in the business district, and I cannot find that anywhere. And so I'm either missing it, or it's not there. I'm not sure. Does anybody, can anybody help me? The only one that I found that said six-foot fence was industrial activity in the business district needed a six-foot fence. So if by chance that's ever found, if somebody could forward that our direction, that would be appreciated. So our reasoning, oh, and we, so other things that I've done is I contacted the emergency services for the police and the sheriff's office about any complaints, and are we in good standing with them? Because one concern that was brought to our attention is, what if alcohol is handed over the fence? And I'm like, I can hand a beer over a five-foot fence, or a six-foot fence, or a three-foot fence, doesn't matter. But we're in the city of Cassin. We're not in a college town. And our, our public that we serve really isn't that age demographic. Not that we don't welcome them by any means, but our demographic just isn't, we're not a big party type of establishment. So Chief Hanson got the report today that we have had one complaint in five years that came to the sheriff's department, and it had to do with noise during festival in the park. We had a band. Is that correct, sir?
Correct.
Yeah. And another thing that was requested of us, and it was sent today from our insurance company to make sure that our patio is covered insurance-wise, and that was forwarded to the city, and we do have that. So what we'd like to talk about is why, say that again?
No, just asked if I received it. I said I wouldn't have received it. Jan would have.
It goes, the two people on the email were city accounting and finance. Those were the two emails that were included on it, from them, from Student Insurance. Molly sent it, actually. And I do have a copy of it, too, so if you need it. I have a copy of it. So I've looked around different establishments. We've taken pictures. I shared this with the planning and zoning last week. And we can't find anywhere that has six-foot fences, first of all. We've, one that I use as a large example is the Pine Island Liquor Store. They're right on the main drag. They have baluster-type fencing, and there's no, there's no gates anywhere. It's just open. And I should've called and asked if there was any complaints about Pine Island Liquor Store, but I'm not sure. The cost-effectiveness is the biggest thing that's concerning us right now, is to build a six-foot fence is expensive for us. And we try to take our funds that we raise and give them back to the community, because we're a nonprofit organization. So that's kind of our main goal. By building this patio and expanding our patio, it allows us to create more revenue by bringing in different types of activities and events. We've talked about having a beanbag league and different things like that, which would increase our revenue, which increase, gives back to the community. It also, the shorter fence, it just looks nicer. Honestly, it doesn't look like a prison. And nobody there feels like they're in a prison. And when people see other people at an establishment, they're like, hey, what's going on at the Legion? Let's stop in there. And we wanna see that. People see people, and they wanna be a part of it. It allows for a more COVID-friendly atmosphere. We have been packed on Friday nights. I don't know if anybody's been down for a burger night, but it's packed. And this would allow us to expand our people outside a little bit more, as far as with service outside and everything. So we're prepared to increase the number of staff that's already employed. Matter of fact, we've already gone through some of that initial hiring. So the last but not least is, we just want consistency within the city. And the one thing that we've seen at different establishments, our proposal is, Dwayne had asked if we could come with specs as far as the fence we want. Well, if it doesn't pass, then most people don't wanna give us a bid on something and put all the time and energy into something that's not gonna happen. So what we've, what our proposal is, we would like to, on the bottom, you can see the pictures from Smiling Moose, the planer boxes. So it would be a planer box with a fence panel, planer box, fence panel. That's what we're kind of proposing as a fence per se, and to do away with the gates. And then we're gonna, we're gonna, eventually, we're gonna buy some whiskey barrels and put planners and mills on the corners. We wanna add some lighting out there. I talked to Joe Fitch about fire, and we went through all that, and he was okay. The fighter chief was okay with everything that we were proposing. And so we're just asking for an amendment to our already approved patio with a couple changes. Does anybody have any questions?
What height are you proposing that your fence be?
No, no less than three feet, and that's what we have found consistently around. That's what events is. Is their fences three, and you can question us.
No.
You can look at my tape. We've been out there several times.
I'm not questioning you. I'm trying to picture it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
So basically, it's a continuation of what's already there?
Um, yes, thank you.
The defense that's around the patio that's there now is about three, three and a half feet.
Exactly.
Because I can barely step over it if you try.
Yep.
So.
Yep. It's a little shy of three feet, actually. And we're asking for nothing less than three feet. And then we would take it down during, we would take the two sides down during the winter and have parking there.
Any questions? I, I mean, my opinion is, we've already approved the patio that's there with the fences there. It's been there for several years. There hasn't been any problems. Myself personally, if I owned the property, I wouldn't wanna put a six-foot fence in when I've already got a three-foot fence, and we've already approved it with three-foot fence before. As long as it meets the liquor, you know, just like when you use the fence when you're doing a special event, it's gotta be coordinated in with the fence. And so as long as this met that same standard, I don't know how we'd be, how we can request something more that we've already approved before.
I just did a complete search of the ordinance, and the only reference to six feet is the maximum height I can find.
Yeah, I couldn't find anything.
There wasn't, there's no thing.
In regards to six foot.
I've looked before, too. There's nothing in there I can find, so.
Yeah.
I think that was the direction the council gave when they previously approved it, so that's probably where that stems from.
So, I mean, personally, I don't have a problem with it at the three feet or whatever that's currently there, as long as it, because all you have to do is have it fenced in to meet the liquor license.
You don't even have to have it fenced in to meet a liquor license. And you'll notice that, like, you'll notice that certain establishments, they have patios. Yes, Pete's has, they don't have a fence. The Mexican restaurant is at El Cumbres. I can't remember the name of it. They have, they have the sidewalk patio. Is that what it's called?
El Patron.
Oh, thank you. El Cumbres is in Byron, isn't it? Sorry. Patron, but they have, they have a sidewalk patio. And there's no fencing or anything there. Fences aren't required. It's just whatever the city wants.
Sure.
Where would you store it when you take it down for winter?
We have, we have storing capabilities.
Okay. And just no gate, just an open access?
Just open access.
Now, I think, maybe, Dan, maybe you asked the planning commission about the parking lot component when they take the fence down. Was it the angle ironed or something like that?
Oh, Dwayne was asking.
Yeah, the permanency, but if, if we're talking.
Fire boxes are the difference.
Yeah, we're talking plans. It's completely different.
Yep, it's different then, because they can act out as a.
The other question we had, too, was just on the west, the west and the south side of, to protect people in there if you had any kind of barrier. But the planer box is more than just a fence, so I think that was.
It provides the weight.
Yeah, it's gonna be different than, originally, it was just a wood panel, and we were more concerned of the.
But is it gonna be, like, on wheels, planer box, or?
Only, well, we haven't gotten that far yet. That's what, as you can see in that bottom picture, that's what Smiling Moose has.
Right.
And we don't know. We will, we will go on your recommendation, but they have to be able to be moved.
Because if your point is, you're trying to protect people, then having it on wheels just makes it super easy.
Well, and that was the city entrance area, and we'll, we'll make sure that that's taken care of on there. Because, like what you guys recommended on that one.
I know.
That one drive.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just a little more.
It's just a little bit more subjected to the, to the main road.
Yep.
Yep.
Which then, you know, protects you as much as.
You bet. Liability purposes.
That was, that was the biggest concern, but now that it's a planer box, it's gonna be a lot more weight, so.
Okay. Any questions for Deb? Or discussion, or?
I went on Friday, and it, I think, having a fence around that, there's a lot of kids that helped support when they're, like, they were doing the, cheerleading team was doing the burger night. There were a lot of families that brought their kids. It would be nice to have that enclosed. See, my daughter showed up later, and just to have that space enclosed would make us feel a little safer, I think.
I think so, too, and I think it identifies the space. Instead of having it open, it identifies this as a patio, you know?
It's inviting.
Yeah, it's very inviting.
I do have one more question, and I don't know if you haven't answered. You said a planer box and then a panel. How far apart?
Right on top, right, so we'll have to, it'll be consistent, so there'll be no space in between.
Okay.
So it'll be the planer box and attached to that will be a panel, and then a planer box. It minimizes costs by being able to have the panels in between, but it provides that security if cars come in.
Right. Yeah, I just didn't want it, all of a sudden, you got.
Right.
Eight, ten-feet panel, and then you go right through it.
Yeah. So our, our goal was to just match the panter, planter size.
Height as well?
The height of it, no, no less than thirty-six inches. And we're gonna work with our materials, basically, what we're gonna do.
Save cost.
Save cost. Utilize what we got.
So just to clarify, the only thing that we're, we're not looking at determining structure or the components. We're only adjusting the height.
Yeah.
Best on the passage resolution.
It's their, their fence. They're gonna put the investment that they need or want to, and if they have to replace it, you know, moves is up to them, where they, you know, just the height.
And the permanency of it.
They can come down and go back in seasonally.
Yeah.
With that understanding, I'll move to approve the amend to the previous, was it resolution?
Resolution, uh.
I think it was a motion.
Just a motion.
So.
Just amend, we'll just, your motion is to amend the.
From six feet to thirty-six feet.
No, no less than thirty-six.
No less than thirty-six inches.
To allow for a non-permanent component to be on the south and west side of the.
Yeah.
Linda's got all that.
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Sorry.
I'll second that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing the improvement.
I have one additional question. Do we need to make any amendments to our liquor license that notice, notes that, or since the state doesn't require it, that's not an option? The state requires the size, so Jan does need to send an amendment in showing the size of the new patio.
Right, because whenever you have, you know, a special event, you have to do the special event license to show that square footage is out, so.
Right, so the square footage is on our liquor license currently, so we need to have, or the dimensions of our current patio, so we need to have that amended.
But is, do you have that on here someplace? The new dimensions?
It's on the, here.
It's on that original map they brought in.
Oh, sure, okay.
B1 there?
We'll just attach that to the license after.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then when we take it down in the winter, we don't need anything to continue the patio license under just our.
No.
According to the state.
Shouldn't, no.
I just wanna make sure we're all clear and agree with that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public forum, I don't have any cards. Your cards. Planning Commission, F1.
There are three items tonight under the planning commission, report from their, their meeting. They had public hearings for solar ordinance, animal kennel ordinance, and sign ordinance. And the council is familiar with, with these, having discussed them at our council meetings previously. There are staff reports attached to those, and we would take them one by one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
The first one is, of course, the solar ordinance, which may be the most impactful. You can see the staff report there from, from our planner. Basically, in response to some of the, the needs that we're having in our community, we're seeing some changes. You know, we've had a number of requests for rooftop solar in Cassin. So far, I think we have three requests, two that have been fully approved already, and so basically, that's what this ordinance change is, is related to. In essence, what we're looking at doing is we'll be eliminating ground-mounted solar in residential neighborhoods. I think part of the calculation is that it's hard to maintain the aesthetic of a residential neighborhood based on the setbacks and that sort of thing. So it also sets some of the criteria for the rooftop. Some amendments that the planning commission made, we're adding in some sections on fire code, and, and also just the other criteria. In your packet, under that item of the ordinance, you've got the, the changes there. The strikeouts are things that are being eliminated, and then, of course, the underlines are things that are gonna be added in. So under section two, where it discusses chapter 154, section 154, talks about accessory solar systems. And I'll just, I'll just read that, because it's probably one of the larger changes. "In all districts, only building or roof-mounted systems shall be permitted. Ground-mounted systems aside from community solar farms are prohibited as an accessory solar system." And then the next, the item under there would be under the height. "Roof-mounted solar energy systems shall not project beyond the peak of the roof and should not be more than four feet above the roof's surface to which they are attached." One of the other components that was added in was requiring that the planning be made for when these projects basically have reached their life expectancy. And the, it was a simple addition, basically just requiring them to return the, the home to its previous condition. I think, Dan, that was one of the ones that you highlighted in our last meeting, so. And I, two of the members of planning commission here tonight as well, so I don't know if you have, gentlemen, anything else you wanted to highlight.
I think there was one that we highlighted in there, too, was just to make sure that part of it was when it was non-functioning, that they had a timeframe to remove it.
That's right.
Which is part of putting it back to original, but.
That's right.
Because that was kind of a concern.
We do know that this is gonna continue to change over time. One of the biggest add-ins was towards the end of the ordinance, is related to the interconnect agreements. Because in reality, our interconnect agreements govern a number of the items that are covered in this ordinance as well. The electric department has to make sure that this is all very safe for the residents, and that it'll also work into our system properly. We have a couple of old connections that have had been replaced already, in order for the people to be able to utilize these systems. So I know that the electric department's keeping a very close eye on it, and as well as our utility partners through Compass are also reviewing this as those cities get different requests as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Tim or planning and zoning members on that?
The only question I have, and it's that, that one odd house that I mentioned where it looks like the solar panels are kind of on the wall, or they're leaning. There's, there's a couple of odd properties in old northwest Cassin.
Sure.
Would those, if they are still operational, if they are in fact solar panels, I just can't figure out what else they could be, would they be grandfathered in?
Yes, they will.
Okay.
The existing conditions would remain. If they were going to replace them, we would look to try and enforce the, the new ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
And this is for all residential lots in the city, not governed by the size? You know, just thinking about out in the little subdivision where they've got one or two acre lots, where you could have outs, that's still on the building only.
I think that, yeah, that would, I suspect that neighborhood might even be more sensitive to the ground mounted than some other area.
Sure. Yeah, but just thinking ahead with people requesting they have the land, so, okay.
This is a starting point.
Right.
Sure. It's gonna change.
Yeah, we, yeah.
It'll change. Okay.
You gotta start somewhere, yeah.
So has this, has the public hearing already taken place for this?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're gonna approve this ordinance tight, then.
Okay, if you desire to do so, yes.
Yep, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Mel. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Ordinance is approved.
The next on the list is the animal kennel ordinance. And this is related to some feedback we received, I think, from the police department, and the difficulty in enforcing some of the components of the code. Linda, is that correct?
Yeah.
So we have the staff report with that attached as well. Basically, it's, it's not a large change, but the issue was related to the language on the number of animals and what that creates in terms of kenneling. So you can see in the staff report and then in the ordinance itself that, you know, the requirements are quite clear now, that they have a certain number, and it shouldn't go in excess of that. So that would allow for our police department to do citations if necessary, and hopefully eliminate confusion. So if you look at that first part of it, it just, number one, very clearly, "No residential address shall own, care for, have custody, or control of more than three dogs within the city limits." And then on the lower part, you can see where it's been extra language has been added in to allow four kennels in the proper parts of town. We do have one that does do some boarding overnight, and we wanted to allow for that, you know, in, in terms of, if a business was in the right area of town, it makes sense to allow them to do that.
Okay.
Same question that I had last time. What about people that have presently four dogs?
Sure. You know, and that's, that's a good question. I know that in a previous community where I worked, you know, our policy was to ask the life cycle of the animals completed, that we would begin enforcing that. I mean, we're not, and I'm certainly not intending to have anyone be forced to remove a dog from their home.
Okay.
I think most folks, once they realize that's the rule, I mean, it's reasonably clear-cut. And in terms of actual residential dog ownership, we don't typically see a lot of problems. We have a couple, I think, Linda's run into a couple of issues where they may have been doing training or something like that. The other thing that's very clear is that when an animal, when a dog has puppies, there's a, there's a period of time that they're allowed to have those. So that would not be affected either. So just because you have a, you know, a litter, you know, this isn't, you know, we're not going to take the puppies away or anything like that.
Sure.
Just to be very clear, it's intended to, to work into the system as naturally as possible, so.
But there is one address in town that is still being complained about that has five dogs.
Yeah.
So this is where this came about.
I understand.
And they want to citation them.
Yeah.
And this will give them the ability to do that.
Well, yeah, once the, once they life cycle down, right now with five, we.
Well, I think in this case, they're not actually all claimed as household pets.
Okay.
They are, in essence, saying that they're doing some sort of training with them.
Okay.
And, and that's kind of where it lies the rub here, you know, as I said, most residential homes that I've seen in town, you know, two dogs, three dogs is typical, especially if they're larger pets. I know in my neighborhood, there are a lot of dogs, and I'm pretty sure they are not all licensed in, in Cassin, unfortunately. But typically, two, two large dogs or maybe, maybe you see three small dogs. But this particular residence is one where we've received a number of resident complaints, and it's usually the catalyst for when we change things, is when we receive complaints like that. We're not trying to go all over our way to picking on anybody or anything like that, so.
I don't think we're talking about the same property.
No.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on that? Entertainer motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Under the sign ordinance.
This one hopefully is the most clear-cut of all three. This was in response, earlier this year, we had a number of questions about political signage. We reviewed that, and our attorney's given us her opinion on, based on case law that's come about the last five, 10 years, that certain things are just not able to be prohibited. Included a recent article from the League of Minnesota Cities Magazine in your, your packet as well. So the change here would be pretty straightforward. Basically, we'll be just changing part A of our ordinance there, and it's section 154, decimal three, four, four. It would read, "Temporary political signs not exceeding thirty-two aggregate square feet in area, meaning any sign that displays surfaces which is primarily constructive, cloth, canvas, fabric, paperboard, or other light material, intended or suitable for only temporary period of display and advertising the candidate for political office or proposition to be relied upon." Partly, that language came about from feedback from the planning commission related to the aggregation of, of footings. They noted that there have been a number of signs which are four by eight. You know, I think originally, we were looking at like a two by four or something like that, and they felt that that might not be realistic for folks. I know that this last year, for example, with the school board candidates, a number of them had larger wooden signs that were in, of course, very strategic locations. But I think that's sort of where we were kind of considering it at, so. That's the only change. There's no other changes to this. It's just to codify that aspect of this and bring us in compliance.
Any questions on that?
So I do have one.
Okay.
When you're listing your description, you were saying that sign is plywood. Is that considered light material, or do we have to list that it could be?
I would consider that as light material.
Just because some, that might come up, that's the only reason I'm asking. Especially if they're already existing.
The school board signs were.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think that the light materials intend to cover a variety of components, and it's hard for us to say.
You can't list everything, but I was just merely asking.
I would consider something like plywood is definitely a light material, and it's intended to be a temporary sign.
Yeah.
And those ones certainly are. Those school board signs are.
They could probably sell their signs now for eighty dollars.
Yeah.
Or more.
Sign on somebody's roof.
If you fly over, you'll see that right on the sheeting on the.
Drone.
Any other questions on that? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, planning commission, for putting those together. Under old business, orderly annexation with Canistio Township.
So this is a draft agreement with Canistio Township. You'll recall, we had some discussion earlier this year with Manorville Township, and this agreement is very similar to that. Currently, the city does not have an orderly annexation agreement with Canistio Township. So I felt it was prudent, knowing the growth in the city's gonna continue to come, both on the north side and potentially on the south in the next couple of years, to set something up with them. We discussed it with their board, I don't know, maybe a month ago. And they did authorize this agreement, and I know that, and I, we don't necessarily have to have approval tonight if you have questions about boarding that's unusual. It's not as wide-scape as I would have liked. However, I do think it's a, it's a basis for an agreement, you know, which can be amended. You note in exhibit A there that the, the area that they're adding or allowing for the orderly annexation agreement is simply the parcels that are not on that, not already annexed in on the north half of section, I think that's section four. So you can see, it's really not a tremendous amount of property. However, the, the nice thing about it, from my, as I said, my stance is as we see growth, you could just simply amend the agreement with the new areas that would be added in. I mean, this doesn't affect us immediately. We know that that's probably our, you know, growth area right there, right away, that's on the south side of, of town. However, it's nice to have that in place so that in the future, it's easier to amend than trying to go through something. And township boards change quite a bit, so we wanna have that sort of agreement in place.
Absolutely. No, it's a good start, because we didn't have anything before, so it's nice to have something started.
Tim, I did look at this, and I had just a couple of.
Sure.
Very minor tweaks to it.
Absolutely. What do you got? Absolutely. What do you got?
In paragraph one, in the third sentence, it says, "The city shall not petition nor consent to any annexation of any area in the township except pursuant to this agreement." I would suggest maybe the city shall not petition for any annexation of any area in the township and take out nor consent to. Because if we have another, there are some properties that are adjacent to the city that if they petitioned to come in, the city would want them to come in.
Sure.
And this would preclude us from doing that. So, that's the only substantive change I would make. And then there's just a little typo in paragraph seven.
Okay.
And one little thing I'll just show you.
Well, just, yeah, if you've got it written down, I can certainly take that.
I do, yeah. You can, you can have that.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else anybody's got?
I stole my thunder 'cause I was gonna ask about those two properties.
Sorry, Dwayne.
And thank you for getting this together. I know dealing with the township sometimes can be challenging at best.
Yeah, they're very dedicated public servants, but it is important to try and communicate on a regular basis. And actually, we had a good conversation with them about the fire truck acquisition at the same time. So, I mean, I think what we're gonna try and do is have more regular meetings with both of them.
How often?
My plan is to also go up to Manorville Township on a more regular basis because we do see a lot of growth there. The planning commission discussed a solar project in that area as well and we know that we'll be done with Manorville Township on some of those, you know, land use questions. So, that's kind of a, just kind of a good thing to have, I think, so, thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Yep, appreciate it.
I'll move to approve with recommended changes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Food truck policy.
All right. This is one that's also been reviewed a little bit before by the council. You've got the council action sheet in there, pretty straightforward and the park and rec board actually took a look at this policy at their last meeting and had a good discussion about it, very, very good discussion actually, much more than I thought. They didn't have a lot of changes to the policy itself. The bigger discussion, and Ryan, of course, can talk about it too, was the parks that we wanted to be able to authorize the food trucks in. And the, there are three parks that they felt were, at this time, there was a fourth, you know, veterans park they discussed, they tabled. We're gonna have some more discussion about that because of the interaction with the aquatic center, that sort of thing. They did look at East Diamond Park, Lions Park, and then Prairie View, which is kind of a soccer field, greenway, kind of on the northwest. And they felt that those three would be very appropriate to allow food trucks for. And then, as I said, they'll have some more conversation about the veterans park. I don't know, Ryan, if you wanted to highlight anything else?
Yeah, we had a good conversation about would it be beneficial to allow food trucks near the veterans parks just because we have, sometimes we have parents or adults that are at the pool watching their children, but then they want to have a meal that maybe isn't nachos or a pretzel or a hot dog. Most of your kids, if you've gone to the pool, I've gone with my daughter a few times, the kids will wait in line for an hour for a hot dog or a pretzel, but the adult is gonna wanna, if there were ribs outside at a food truck, the adult would probably leave, wait in line for the ribs while the kids stayed in the pool. Most kids aren't gonna wanna leave the pool area to go get nachos or ribs. So, that conversation went back and forth and then we talked about just tabling it and seeing how things go with these other locations where other events are being held. Hockey arena was another one we talked about as well. And then waiting to see how that goes over the course of this year and then maybe make that adjustment next year. One thing we talked about also is the pool doesn't right now allow for debit cards and credit cards, but next year, they should be allowing that, they should update their system. So, that could have an impact as well, just in how we look at those things.
Yeah, and actually, like I said, the conversation went in a couple of directions I didn't really expect it to. I had not thought of some of the points. And I was talking with Ronnie about the, some of the different things after the meeting came up and there definitely are some positives to allowing the food trucks in veterans parks because it might eliminate some of the need for us to replace some of our capital equipment at the pool. You know, currently, we have a number of expensive items that are near the end of their lifespan. You know, we've got a slushy machine and we've got other equipment that is, I mean, I didn't realize slushy machines $5,000. That's a lot. I very enjoy those slushies, kids. But it's a popular item too, you know, no doubt.
It's popular.
Very popular item. So, what we looked at is, is kind of the cost benefit analysis and also the cost of staff. So, I mean, this is a good point, I think, that Mr. Petrie brought up. You know, we look at, you know, our cost of goods is X. Say, I think $25,000 is about what it costs and we have revenue around $40,000 on sales. So, okay, right away you think, well, that's great, $15,000 profit. However, when we take into account the wages that are paid to staff that are, you know, selling the product, it actually is, it's a probably, I would say, negligible amount, generally speaking. Now, this summer, we probably have a little bit higher profit margin or a little bit, you know, turnover's been more substantial. The more you sell, the greater your profit margin is. Your labor cost stays the same, so, I mean, you create a net positive there. We did talk about maintaining certain high volume items, for example, like, continue to sell pop because it's a very easy item to sell. Doesn't require food, it requires a cooler. Same thing with ice cream cones or prepackaged items where we don't have to worry about the health and safety component of it, we don't have to staff at the same level. This is probably talking more than needs to be talked about. We're gonna bring it up again at park and rec, there's lots of things to think about, but I think what we're looking at for this summer is to just look at those three parks probably and then, as Ryan mentioned, maybe amending it this fall if we have some more of a conversation about it. I mean, I really hadn't thought of it. I just kind of had thought, well, you know, we'll keep the aquatic center, but there were some really good points raised, so...
Question I have, I know it says under operation number two, using utilities from public property and right of ways prohibited, how are we gonna be policing that if there's a food truck in our park?
Well, I mean, I think, and Linda, you can talk to this too. This was a policy that I give Linda a lot of credit for doing the research and coming up with, but I think part of it is that, and one of the other issues that came up was, okay, we decide that we're gonna do food trucks, we really need them to come every day, you know, in a hot season, you know, so it doesn't work for them to say, well, I'm gonna go to the fair over in Owatonna and for us on a Saturday not to have any kind of food. So, that is another thing. What we would end up doing is probably some kind of permit where we would charge a fee. And included in that could be electrical use, they might pay for electricity or something like that. And in terms of otherwise, in their permit, it would say, you know, are they gonna use a generator or are they gonna ask to tap into the city electric? And that's, if their permit says they're using a generator, then if they're trying to use electric, they pull the plug.
You know, if they're tapping in, you're gonna have to kind of figure out a rough idea how much they're using, that's...
Well, that's why the policy says too, that they have to be fully self-contained. They are not allowed to plug into the city.
Well, just, just 'cause we tell them not to, we still need to be able to...
Somebody will turn on them. Somebody will turn on them.
After the dogs get sighted, Josh is gonna come, he's right over there to the aquatic center and he's gonna, right Josh, you're gonna give them...
That was my...
No, I mean, that's a good question and I'd say that anywhere. I mean...
You're right. You could just go anywhere. I mean, that was the whole reason originally the food trucks were not on city properties, just 'cause we didn't want using electricity plus taking away from business, but...
Well, and that's the bigger question, you know, is taken away from business. And I mean, in our case where it's a city-owned business, we can make some kind of arrangement where we receive a, either a percentage or some kind of permit fee. I don't know about other properties. This is really just dealing with the parks. I know we had an issue earlier this summer that you brought to my attention.
This is just on public property. Private property can still do what they want, but...
Right, but...
It just seemed out of bad form for the city to...
Allow a...
Buy a place for a mobile restaurant that doesn't pay any taxes here, participate in the community, to set up shop across the road from two restaurants that were closed for eight months. So, just, to me, that was just bad form.
Different situation.
Didn't look good. It was a different situation. But this is now on our public property, which isn't the parking lot at the liquor store, it's at the parks and specific things. I think that's fine.
And if you wanted to add any other public property, right now it's just the parks.
Right.
If you wanted to add other public property, it does say within 100 feet of any other. So, if it was in that liquor store parking lot again, back, it could go to the back of the parking lot and still be 100 feet away from pizza and buffet king. But that's up to you whether you want to allow it anywhere else than the parks that the park board has.
I would personally just take the park board's recommendation for the parks, 'cause that parking lot's not a bad spot to have something like that, but the parking was atrocious.
Yeah, sure.
It just wasn't a good place, it wasn't big enough for the demand that it had.
Yeah, and I don't know if that commuter lot down...
At the back of the liquor store got peed on quite a bit that night.
But the commuter lot too, that's not being used.
That's when I pulled up there, they were doing that.
Southside towards Quick Trip.
So, after you cite them at the park, you gotta cruise on past, okay, we're gonna keep you busy.
Well, they were waiting in line for like an hour for their food. Poor kids had to go to the bathroom. I pulled up behind the liquor store and there's two of them drawing their name on the back of the building, so...
But I, I mean, I do think for us, it's, once again, a policy that can be amended. It's just, this is a start, we haven't had it in place before and if we see that there are other places in town that are appropriate or not appropriate, then it can be changed.
Yeah. That's good. It's a good start that we'll be governing in the parks if we wanna make it available. They're always welcome to do it on private property wherever they want, so...
But those parks do have at least portable facilities for small people to use their business.
Right.
They have a clinic just called too and wanted to know, they're putting, they want a food truck for a special event and they wanted to put it on the street.
Our Mayo Clinic.
Our Mayo Clinic. And I told them they could put it in their parking lot.
Sure. That'd be just like we do for any other special event, they just get a permit for the day or whatever and, or permission.
They wanted to put it on the street.
On 34?
Yeah, on Main Street.
But on the corner of Main Street. But it's like their parking lot's right across the street.
I mean, their parking lot, they can do whatever they want in their parking lot.
Right.
Right. That's why I said, they can put it in their parking lot.
Sure.
They just probably don't have power over there.
So, when we give them a permit for this to do, we just gotta make sure they read the rules and understand not to hook into power and, you know...
They will get a copy of this, they will get a little city map with the three parks of where they can park.
And the rough area in the parks or...
Well, they have to be in the parking lots.
In the parking lot, okay.
That may, that may be something we need to follow up on too, you know, I mean, is where exactly do you wanna have them? You know, 'cause obviously, we don't want them restricting traffic flow in and out of, like, East Diamond Park doesn't have a huge parking lot.
Right.
You would wanna make sure that they're in a spot, and I'm sure they're gonna wanna be in a spot that's away from cars 'cause obviously, they're gonna have a line or something like that. And I don't know how much use you're gonna see. You know, we, I mean, I know the parks, we talked a lot about, like, East Diamond Park...
During tournament time or during...
Well, at a point where we have two diamonds there, you're gonna have tournament games. Right now, it's more of a local use than anything else, but, yeah.
The Mayo parking lot within 100 feet of Smiling Moose?
No.
It's on the backside.
From the backside, there's that...
Maybe, depends where you park your food truck.
Head start, head start and then the Mayo Training Facility buildings are between, so I think that's probably 100 feet.
And that would just be a one-time special thing, it wouldn't be a...
Yeah.
Whereas, in front of the clinic would probably be significantly closer than...
True.
Your ordinance is needing to do.
Be tough to put it on Main Street there, there's a lot of traffic coming.
I'd say they could maybe even look at...
Yeah.
Maybe.
Their, their traffic through the clinic is also very much impedes fourth and fifth in terms of the parking at the end. You can't see as it is anyway.
They should use their parking lot. Anyway, that's outside the scope of this. So, any other questions on the first swing we got at this and like everything else, we're gonna, we'll be amending and changing it as we experience things, so... I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for getting that together, everybody. New business, Comet Acres Final Plat.
We've got two items, so we've got the final plat approval and then also the development agreement. I don't know, Brandon, if you wanna talk about this a little bit. But it's relatively straightforward. These were agreed upon and reviewed. Planning commission and council approved the preliminary plats. We have a final design that integrates that transit with the trail to the west side of the, or to the north side of the property. There were not a lot of other changes that I'm aware of. Development agreement's been thoroughly reviewed by our staff. So, I don't know if Brandon, if you have any other thing you wanna highlight?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. There are a couple of conditions of approval, including executing some easements, signing the draft development agreement, conveying a couple of all labs for the trail, distrib reference, and then also a stormwater pond, so pretty straightforward from that perspective, so...
Okay. Any questions on that? Anything in there?
There was only, there was only one question I had someone from the public asking me about, or maybe it was you Nancy. I think we had a question about that. If you look on the first page of the final plat there, in the white hashing, Brandon, it covers that area to the, to the west and south, it kind of stretches along there. I thought that was probably because of the trail extension that's gonna go along 16th the trail extension that's gonna go along Sixteenth Street. But the, the overall area that's, you know, highlighted is a little larger than just the subdivision itself.
You don't want the construction plans now?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so you have the first page?
Yep, first page.
Oh, you're talking about that little tail of the subway?
Yeah, that was just a question, it was just a question about that.
Yeah, so this subdivision includes a little different sanitary sewer than we traditionally installed, just due to the topography, the, the topography essentially drains to the north to the creek, so this area can't be served by gravity, it's a little different system with small grinder system, a small diameter force main, and that's gonna be all pumped individually in individual houses, and that's gonna go along Sixteenth Street and turn and come down through the Johnson subdivision there. So that's kind of the, that's not included in the platted area, but that's part of the sewer extension to dump that into our sanitary sewer that in turn drains to the treatment plant. So that's why on the construction plans, you see a different hashed area, because that is the limits of the construction project itself. That also includes along Sixteenth Street, because the trail's being extended along Sixteenth Street for where the trail ends now, through the subdivision, so, just a little difference on what the construction project footprint is compared to the plats, so.
Yeah, that was the only question I had seen from you.
Okay. Anything else?
So, we're looking for a motion to approve-
Final plats?
-incent on the finalization of those points presented.
Conditions, yeah.
And that's laid out for the rest of the-
So, we're looking for approval for a resolution, approving final plat for the property at PID, known as Comet Acres, so, and it has those conditions listed there at the bottom part of that resolution, so.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Thanks Dwayne, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan, all in favor, said aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then, do we need to do something on the development agreement? Or does the final plat cover that?
Um, I think with approval of final plat, you know, the, it just, we include that so you, you can see, we do have a development agreement and, and we'll be asking you to sign that, Mr. Mayor, but-
Sure.
Then development agreements, I think we're getting better and better at it, we're getting the process down, we've kind of instituted new processes here with our planning and zoning, working with Oysington, Coigler, and with all the activity we've had, we're, we're starting to get really good at, now we've just gotta get everything recorded right, and we're gonna be in, in crackerjack shape, so.
Okay, on to administrator's report.
All right, you've got my report there, and I also have a couple other items just to, to bring up tonight that came up over the last couple of days. So, let's see here, uh, I think you probably will see this in your next packet, next meeting, related to the dues, we're looking at dues increases for the league, I mentioned the park and rec updates, and I have some good, good news on that, so, Lions Park, we had, had already had a plan to install some basketball courts down there, kind of a joint ventures program, working with the school in Manorville, and we had the Lions Club come to us at our last meeting, and they were interested in doing pickleball, and, and so, our park supervisor was, he took a good look at it, and he was like, well, it's gonna be thirty thousand dollars for concrete, and, you know, and maybe we don't, can't do it next year, you know, and I told him, I said, you know, if you want to do it, it's really gonna be your, it's your budget item, and that's, that's it for next year. And then, you know, I don't know exactly how it came about Ryan, but the suggestion was what about doing pickleball courts on top of the basketball courts that are already being installed? It doesn't interfere, it seems like there's some, you know, good multi-use courts in essence, and so, that is kind of what the park and rec department's looking at. It'll also accelerate the process of getting those pickleball courts installed. If we hadn't waited otherwise. So what they're looking at is two basketball courts and two pickleball courts panned on top of those, and so, and Ronnie's got some bleachers, he wants to move out there too, so, especially for our senior population that is really interested, the Bay Boomer population that's interested in the, the pickleball, seems to be very popular with that part of the community. Go ahead.
Um, since this was a joint ventures deal, because joint ventures funded the majority of the basketball, and it's a memorial court, we should probably run that by the joint ventures to make sure, and then the family also kicked in some money because it's a memorial basketball court.
I think Ronnie mentioned he had talked with the family.
So I'm-
Tell you, he was going to, yeah.
Is he, yeah, okay, so as long as we address that with joint ventures and the family, and then figure out how you're gonna police who gets to use it and when, if you got a bunch of kids down there playing basketball, and then some folks come in and say, hey, we're gonna play some pickleball on this one, and they say, take a hike, old man, you know, we're, you know what I mean, is there gonna be a shared use type thing?
Yeah, I did bring it up at the, at the meeting, and that is something we'll have to take a look at. One positive is that, you know, for example, during the school year, you're not gonna have an issue, because it's not gonna, you're not gonna have the crossover necessarily. In the summertime, you will have to take a look at it. Schedule-wise, I do think that, you know, we may have to do some scheduling for that, so.
It might be similar to like when you schedule a pavilion, have them-
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's interesting, it kind of just came up at the park and rec meeting last week, and so I didn't, there were some questions still to be asked, but I mean, I think it's got a lot of merit when we can more likely use some of those, those facilities too.
Sure.
And we had talked about other areas, like looking at the tennis courts we currently have, taking those and restri, fixing those, turning them into pickleball, and what other areas could we put them in, and one of the conversations was, this would take less green space away from the Lions Park if we combined the two. If we were gonna build basketball courts there already, and then put pickleball there in a different location, it would take green space away. And so this kind of combined the two projects into one, so it took less green space, and it costs less than completely overhauling the, the current tennis courts we have over at Veterans Parks.
That's a great idea, I just, I would feel more comfortable running by the family-
And we did talk about the Raymond family, and make sure we have conversations with them, because we know that was a donation that they had put in, we told that to the Lions Club as they were there, and that was the conversation we had.
So I think joint ventures put in what, fifteen or twenty thousand toward that?
I don't know the exact number.
They paid for the blacktop basically, so, or paid for the project.
So, yeah, that just is a highlight, and obviously there's some follow-up we'll have on that, but-
Yep.
Wanted to highlight that, just to highlight the, the personnel committee met earlier this week, and they're recommending that we, we begin paying overtime in lieu of comp time during the pay periods, provide a more accurate financial liability, so that's something I'll be putting out to the department heads tomorrow, just let them know that we'll be seeing those numbers during the pay periods instead of necessarily accruing the comp time. There are some police changes, some officers that we're, we're looking at hiring, and I know Josh, you, you talked to me about that, and that, I think you'll have those probably for our next council meeting. We had some really good interviews, and there's some folks who are hoping to get hired. Let's see here. We're looking at possibly, and this is a question I have for feedback from the council, we're having issues with the mail. Unfortunately, we had a number of bills that were, you know, we just didn't receive the checks for folks that we believe did submit a bill, they did put their check in the mail, and we, we just had such a high rate this last week, that what I'd like to do is, I'd like to take a look at it, perhaps doing an incentive to get more people to sign up for our e-billing, because that will just be a little bit easier for us to, to deal with, and then it would also be a savings to us in terms of not having as many paper bills to mail out. So what I'd, I'd like to do is, I would like to either look at doing some sort of combination of crediting if they go to e-billing, or some sort of cost for the paper bills. I know a number of the local banks have kind of done that, where in order to receive a paper bill, you have to pay a, a paper fee. So I guess, what we're looking at potentially doing is maybe a, a one-time ten dollar credit for people who sign up for the e-billing, or, I know Cassie brought to my attention maybe doing a one dollar a month for a year, twelve, a twelve dollar credit or something like that on their, their bills in order to incentivize people. We just, I, I bring it up because it's a real issue, we had a lot of, people say, oh, well, the mail doesn't come, you know, Casson sometimes, we talk to the post office, and they said, yep, there was a batch of mail that, it goes up to cities and it doesn't always come back, and, or it doesn't come back in a timely way. So we've got folks who are mailing, you know, mailing their bill on the, mailing their check on the third of the month, you'd think, you know, a week should be more than adequate, well, we don't get it until late. What we are doing is with some of these issues, we have been waiving penalties for folks this month because we had such a systemic issue, but we don't want to obviously be doing that, because it creates a, can create some problems in the future too, so, I just, interested in feedback and what the council would say in terms of, if we should be looking into incentivize or, or encourage that e-billing.
I do have one concern, so on your e-billing, if you put more people to it, not, not do you get your bill every month. More than once, probably about every three months, I do not get, I'll get one of the two accounts. So, if we're gonna do it till then now, you gotta call the city, and they gotta resend it back out, so we gotta find a way to make sure if we're gonna start doing more e-billing, that that gets more accurate, or you're gonna have people not gonna call, and then you're gonna try to wanna give them a late fee, but they never received the bill, because some people don't always look at their mail, or emails, and pay attention to it.
I would have, yeah, I haven't checked that, because I get nine bills a month and I've never missed one.
I've missed three times already.
Seven bills.
And it's not necessarily the same one, I have two different accounts, and I'll get, one month I'll get the one, and then a couple, three months later, I'll get the other one, but not the original, it's like it, it flips, and then, so.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's no perfect system, it's just, we've seen so many issues this last week that, that's why I'm bringing it up, and we don't have any required action tonight, I just, something to think about, you know, as we move forward, is how we can incentivize more people to do the, the direct pays and the e-bills, because, I mean, most people generally, I mean, with their credit cards or with their natural gas statements, most people are getting that electronically or something like that already.
Oh, yeah.
So, I think we want to try and move towards that, but I just wanted to bring that up, so that's something to be thinking about. I got notice that, this is the one we talked about earlier, Hardware Hank and Napa are paving their parking lot, and, and the, the way it was relayed to me is that the city should pave their part of that, and it's gonna be a cost of around fourteen thousand dollars. And, you know, the public works director and I talked about it, and there is a section that, on the north side of Hardware Hank, where that, that comes in, that's technically not part of their parcel, but, you know, it looks like at one time it might have been a, an alley or something like that. It doesn't serve a public purpose necessarily anymore, it's more of an access point for those two businesses. I'm bringing it to the council because the way it was relayed to me, they were just gonna do it and build the city, and obviously that isn't the, the right way to do it, there was no conversation with any of the property owners over there related to that, so, at this time, I mean, I, I think what we want to look at doing is probably vacating that. You know, I don't know if there's any public infrastructure in there, Brandon, but I don't think so, yeah, and it's actually, Charlie and I went over and looked at it, it's, you know, we can do some, we can do some repairs to that section, but it's not, it's not heavily, you know, heavily trafficked, it's not really a road, and if, there's actually, I would say some roads that are probably in worse shape than that is, so we can do some patching to some of the worst areas, and then, you know, turn that property over as, as a vacation, I think, and that's what I would recommend, I don't think that repaving that, especially for that kind of cost, is a prudent use of our funds, we don't have a budget to be honest with you, so.
Yeah, it doesn't work that way to schedule a project and just send the city a bill, it doesn't, doesn't work that way.
Well, if you ask most people, they have probably assumed it belonged to that property anyways, that it didn't even belong to, you know, until this, I had no idea the city owned it.
It looks like we're talking that maybe there was gonna be a road there someday at one point, but that's all on the flood plain now, that land that the city owns is useless, it can't be used for anything.
Yeah, the city does own some land in the north, along with the Hindman Concrete property, only a couple of other things, other options to consider is have the private parties pave it, and just leave it as, as an alley, in case there is some future use, could be done. It looks like there was a trail corridor shown on the comp plans of that area, so that may be of benefit to the city as a, you know, future trail corridor potentially, it's not a large portion of it.
Well, so the, the private parcel, I would continue to want to hold, I think.
To the north, yeah.
The square parcel, yeah, so you're talking about making that into the trail then, I think?
Just, you know, open discussion on what are, you know, what are all the things that we think about, so that'd be my other concern, is make sure we're not vacating something and then wanting that later for some other public purpose.
I just don't know what the pedestrians would work on that with the access, because I do know a lot of people park back there and they drive along that, they, I mean, they kind of treat it as a, an access to their rear parking lot, or, I know when I picked up my rototiller or whatever, you're just driving back, and you're back up behind Hardware Hank and you get it there, or whatever.
So I don't know what sort of access easement the private party may or may not have with the city, again, it's a alleyway could be viewed as it's a public use, so we're gonna change the use of that alleyway, so, all things to consider, I guess, when you're talking to the property owner.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the biggest thing I would get at is I don't expect us to pay for that restoration at this time, I don't expect us to pay for that, and as long as the council is comfortable with that, that's what I will relay to the, to the property owner. I mean, I think certainly if it had come to us a little earlier, and we could have talked about doing some kind of partnership, but I, I just, it's not something we have budgeted, it's not a, it serves a very low number of, of folks, so, that's-
If we're going to improve or extend any street, it's gonna be the one between the insurance and hardware.
Right, before it's going to the south, yeah, to the, to the south and east, right.
Yeah.
That's right. And technically, the alleyway ends between the Hardware Store and Napa, so like the backside of Napa, that driveway, that alleyway extension through Napa property is not public right-of-way, so, kinda, you can't really continue to extend it into the property of the east of Napa unless you get an agreement with Napa, so, to Tim's point, I mean, it's really not a public use at this point, so.
So the big thing is, is we don't want to participate in paving it.
Right.
They can peave us out of it, we'll do some repairs to it as we can fill some potholes or cracks or whatever, and then if you want, is it with planning and zoning or whoever, to be looking at that possible vacation to see if it makes sense, or not, taking everything into consideration with the comp plans.
Yeah, I think that'd be what we, we'll be looking at.
And I assume the council would be agreeable to have that property owner repave that?
If they want to pave it at their cost.
At their cost.
I don't, got a couple streets, got a couple streets they can do too, if they want, yeah.
Well, I mean, obviously you want to work with our, our property owners and, but I just, it's not the right way to go about doing things, so, okay, all right, so we've got that, e-bills, mail issues, November meeting scheduled, you'll note, I know it's a little out of, out of time, but it's something that was brought to my attention, we do have a meeting that's scheduled for the, the Thanksgiving, right before Thanksgiving, it's the twenty-fourth of November, so I, I just wanted to see if we could start thinking about whether we need to reschedule that, or if we just have one meeting in November, so, doesn't have to any decisions tonight, just put that on your radar as well.
Would that be the only, how about if, I know in December we have to do some things, because we have to do it in time for the levy?
Yep, we move up the second meeting to right after the first meeting, the second and third, but that's because of the levy and so on, because of the holidays, so that one we move, but we don't eliminate a meeting.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so in December, we'd be looking at the eighth and the fifteenth, right now the meetings in November are scheduled for the tenth and the twenty-fourth, so, just to, just to bring that to your attention, and, you know, obviously as I said, nothing, nothing required tonight, but just wanted to-
I think kind of in the past, Chris, if I'm wrong, did we kind of wait until it got a little bit closer and just to see if there was much of agenda, and then determined?
I think we've canceled a couple times, we've moved it to-
Or moved it ahead a week, sometimes.
Yeah.
Last year you did, otherwise, I think that was the first time you only had one meeting in November.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we've always kept the one before.
Yeah, that Wednesday night, we've just done it, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, good to keep that.
Bringing it to your attention, so, something to think about, we can, we can deal with that later. And then there was another question related to me in terms of adding to the ordinance that all new houses must have sump pumps, that's something that, I had a question from, from the members of the public, and they said, well, is that in your ordinance, do all new houses have to have sump pumps, do we want to require that, with all the sump pump enforcement we've been doing, and I had emailed out to the council those, that list of folks who are gonna be getting letters related to those charges, just so we're, you know, we're cognizant of that, you know, we, there's very, I think there's potential for some pushback when those bills start to go out, I know there was one, the mayor had brought up that we're gonna eliminate off the list, so that, thank you for catching that one, where somebody has done the work, they can be removed from that list. So that's just something that I wanted to bring up to your attention too, is to reiterate that we do have those charges, a hundred dollars a month are gonna be going out, I believe there's about fifty-four, fifty-five customers, it's, we actually had something like ninety-four percent compliance, so really a very high percentage. Then the other part was this new homeowners required to have sump pumps, and whether we should be adding that to the ordinance or not.
I, I think I'm, I'm the one that brought that up, sometimes during a meeting where we're talking about, it makes, only makes sense to me if, you know, only reason I thought about it was because our neighbor really wasn't happy about having to put the sump pump in, they just built the house three years ago. Well, if somebody's gonna build a house tomorrow in Casson, and we're gonna come and do with some kind of sump pump inspection after they've already built their house, and say, now you have to put one in, why wouldn't we require it to be part of our building code to have it when you build it? Because that's just saving headache and, it just, it seems like bad form to let somebody build a house-
And then tell-
-against the ordinance, and then come back later and say, now you have to comply to the ordinance. I don't know what we have to do to make that happen, or maybe you have something that we can't.
Well, and furthermore, we've talked previously about doing a point of sale after this program's completed, where every house has sold in town, to go in and do a sump pump inspection to kind of keep our program fresh, to keep that kind of at the front of our minds, and doing that as each house is sold, just to keep up maintaining our sump pump programs, so maybe to that point, new house comes in, obviously hasn't been inspected with this current program, sells in a few years, we'll be in there doing that sump pump inspection, assuming we institute a point of sale program, so.
I mean, I guess the question that I would have was, so do we require them to have a sump pump, or do we require them to either have a sump pump or have no, you know, sump basket, you know, because I mean, there are town, people in town who can just, they're filled it in, it's concrete in, it's done now, they've chosen not to get a sump pump.
And maybe I misspoke, but if you have a basket, you have to have a pump in it, and it has to be hard piped where legally, legally hooked up. If you don't have a basket, and you're hooked up legally, you don't have a foundation drain, then you're good to go, but it should be part of that inspection process that this house is, is compliant. If they put a basket in, they have to have the pump and the hard piping like it's supposed to be. Because that was the problem with a couple of our neighbors, they had baskets but no pumps. They put them in the middle of the room instead of on the edge, so, yeah, so, it just doesn't make sense we let somebody build a house not in compliance with the ordinance.
I don't know, Brandon, you want to follow up, and we can get some, maybe some draft language together and figure out something.
Yeah, we do that, I want to check the building code too, make sure we're not tripping ourselves.
Why, I mean, make sure we're not doing, but this doesn't make sense that we allow somebody to build something that's against the ordinance.
Especially when you-
And then come back later and say, now you gotta fix it.
We're being aggressive on that programming.
Right. And may as well at the same time the point of sale, may as well, if we're serious about it, let's just start the process.
Realistically, it'd be cheaper to put it in at the time of the-
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it makes sense to wrap it in your mortgage.
And design it improperly, and put it to the middle of the basement.
Not in the middle of the basement floor, yeah.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
The only other thing I wanted to highlight tonight is just, you've got a little blurb there on paternity leave, so I'm anticipating that, I'll probably be out of the office next month quite a bit with my wife's delivery and, and trying to support her, so, I don't expect there to be any real issues, we've got a good senior staff, and, you know, I'll be in town, so it's not a, it's not critical, you know, if we need to come in or something like that, so. Other than that, I take any questions I even have.
You also had on there follow-up discussion on the public safety facility presentation.
That's right, yeah, so outside my report, I've had a good chance to discuss it with most of the council members individually, and, you know, I've met with most of you and talked about it a little bit, I just wanted to see if there was any collective questions that you had, that you want me to bring back the, to the ICS folks, I know that we have our work session on the thirtieth, so some of the financial conversation will be happening then. We had a meeting with Mr. Bubai last week, Nancy, myself, and some of the other staff, and so he's got it on his radar, he's thinking about it and looking at how it'll be programmed in, have had a conversation with USDA, it is a qualifying project, so there would be It is a qualifying project, so there would be some financial benefit to be able to spread those terms out over a longer period of time. And there's some hopes that we have to jump through some hearings, we have to have that kind of thing to do that, but it seems like that would maybe be the, the most beneficial way to do it. But I think questions and then timeline, and some of the conversations I've, I've had with some of the council members, they've encouraged us to look at additional public meetings. Last year we had some electronic feedback from folks who were able to attend those sessions, which was, was beneficial, all in the groundwork, but I think one thing we wanna do is we try and, wanna try and now that things have opened up to have some more public engagement meetings. There's been some feedback on siting, you know, and whether we're looking at the right site or not, I mean, there's positives to each site, there's negatives to each site. And what our timeline really is, because I wanna be clear and I wanna be accurate, I mean, if we know that we're on a three-year, you know, track, then that's good for us to communicate, helps us with messaging. It helps us financially to work it in, you know, if we spread it over a little bit longer period of time, but, you know, I just want that to be clear. So I, I don't know if there was any other feedback anyone wanted to share tonight, but I just wanna keep that, I don't want this to kind of stale, you know, stale out and, and I want to hear that folks are talking about it, so.
I, I guess I'll have more specific questions after we meet with Mike.
Sure.
Because it comes down to being able to pay for whatever it is, wherever it is. And then as far as the public engagement, I think once we know some ballpark costs, impact, how it can be paid for, we get into a little bit more details on what it's gonna involve, that's when you bring the public in to say, hey, this is, this is what we're looking at, what do you think? And get some feedback from the public, the taxpayers, yeah.
Not to do with that project, if we're done with that, I just had a couple people asking, with the Zed Building, they have two entrances now instead of one. And they're trying to figure out how that was possible. They've, they've put two tires in front of the existing one, but they've moved one to the farther, to the north part of the property where the trailer is for the construction of the building.
Yeah, I mean, okay.
Yeah, so as part of the final construction plans, there's only one entrance to the Zed facility. I'm assuming the, the one that's there, that's probably blocked off, would be the existing one. And their, their entrance is generally moving to the north, so I assume that they're building their, their current entrance.
Because people were concerned of why, how they got to have two, but put tires there, they were wondering if that was, so they were wondering if they're gonna move them and then have two.
Yep, that one's coming out, so.
I'll just mail out, I'll email right now all the, the council with the, the plan for that site, so you can kind of see what it's, and I know planning commission members have seen it before and we've seen it before, but just a reminder, you know, with their construction plans.
And I, I didn't have an answer and I-
Sure, I think one, one entrance is the, that is the expectation.
That's what we thought, but then when I seen two and somebody asked about it, I was like, I'll have to ask, because I didn't know. It's easier to ask now than all of a sudden they sneak in a second one and then, you know.
Do you have any other questions? On that, okay, all right, on to the engineer's report, school trail easement approval.
Actually, pretty quick tonight, school trail easement approval tonight, looking for a motion to approve that as part of the Safe Homes of School project that we've talked about at different stages. That's gonna ultimately be in two locations, from the southeast corner of the elementary school, kinda going down along the pond, along Camp Cassin to the, abutting the minor property to the east, down into Houston subdivision. The plan there is feature trails in the minor subdivision that's developed and ultimately tying to that trail. And then also to the northeast from kind of the community ed building, down along the parking ramp, kinda going down that slope to the, kinda crossing the entrance to the athletic facility. And we're gonna have to install a new crossing over on Sixteen Street, that's gonna provide a contiguous trail from Houston subdivision up to the trail along Sixteen Streets, it's kind of filling in some gaps there. As part of the funding, we need to have an easement for the city to own and maintain that trail through there, so it would be a city maintained trail through the school property there. And if you look at the easement there, it's already approved and signed by the school. During the design work, we met with the school, laid out the trail and tweaked it to kind of meet their needs there, so I think, I think it's working out for everybody, so looking for a motion to approve that and obviously answer, answer any questions that you may have. I will say, we did talk about maybe potentially lumping this project, the Safe Homes of School project, into our other northwest trail in the Tenth Avenue paving, we were not able to do that due to the funding, through the state of having federal money into it. So that's still on its current schedule or the past schedule, doing that next construction season, so we have the plans, what, ninety percent wrapped up, so we'll be bidding that here shortly, assuming we don't have a state shutdown or not shortly, probably this fall into winter for next year's construction, so. That's where we're at on that project, so.
Perfect, any questions for the engineer?
Well, what I've received, I don't have the attachment.
Yeah, I noticed they weren't in there, they are in the easement exhibit that the school signed, but they're not in the actual drop box, so I described what they were, so. I could quickly drop those in there, send them off if needed, but.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that in case somebody, it's a lot easier to point it out on a map than to describe it.
Kind of a squiggly line, so I'll, I'll just describe it if, if you'd like. Again, the southeast corner of the, the elementary school, I think there's an existing playground in there and a trail that kinda goes along the south and east face of the school there. We would tie into that point and then continue almost immediately south, kinda going by the, the playground equipment, that's immediately south of the south part of the elementary school. Go down there, cross over the drainage way that comes through there, go along the north side of the pond that's in there, turn, get over to like Wally's property there, the east property line of the school, turn and go immediately south adjacent to Wally Minor's property, into the northeast corner of the Houston subdivision, there's already a trail stub through the first set of houses there connecting to the trail there. So that'd be contiguous from Houston's to the southeast corner of the school, there's a trail along the east side of the school. And then that trail turns and goes to the west to the kind of parent drop-off area there, so it'd be picking up at that northeast corner and going northwesterly kinda towards the drop-off area, not necessarily into the drop-off area, and then immediately north where the drop-off area and the parking lot, driveway entrances on Sixteen Street, which is almost immediately across from Athletic Field. So on the east side of those driveways, we'll have another pedestrian crossing with push buttons and that trail will tie into that crossing and then, they would have a nice contiguous trail system, so. When we worked, walked it through at the school, we think it's gonna be heavily used, not only by the, the school, but also our citizens too to get to that northeast part of town, tied into the trail system. And then obviously future development through Wally Minor's property there, if that was ever to be developed, I'm actually wanting the comp plan to have all those trails tied into that trail to get those, those kids safely to school, so it's our goal and we're doing-
The intent, we're gonna have two traffic controls, one at Fifth Avenue and then this one with the trail?
Yep, we're gonna want it fifth, we're gonna want it at this proposed trail and then we just installed one, it might have went even in today for the Meadow Brook subdivision, which is just east of Thirteenth Avenue, the east to the little subdivision there, and then there's one more, yeah, subdivision on, what avenue is that, Sixteenth Avenue?
Six, yeah. Sixteen, yeah, Sixteenth Avenue.
Four of them, they are, you know, pedestrian actuated, so they're not buzzing all the time. The Meadow, Meadow Brook one I think is beeping right now, so we're having that looked at somewhere with this, but it might be beeping. Well, they already called and said we don't wanna throw it through our front window, so let's get this thing to not be beeping.
That'll be interesting next year when we close Fifty-seven down.
Yeah, well-
If we close, when we close Fifty-seven down, we're actually not, we're actually not gonna detour through our Sixteen Street, we're gonna detour along to the dump road. And the school traffic will have a, you know, that'll be open, so I think, you know, probably see some local traffic, but with the main detour over to the dump road, we don't, we don't think we're gonna see a ton of traffic on Sixteen Street. And that was one of the many considerations we had on the detour.
I think we'll see a pretty good amount of traffic.
Yeah, because most of the traffic is going to Rochester, so.
My, my other concern on Sixteen Street, as you come in from the east, I've asked this before, that speed limit sign says turns thirty, but you crest a hill. Is there a way that we can move, now with the common acres gonna exist, can we move that speed zone ahead farther east? Because you've got people, they'll crest that hill, the lights flashing there, you know, speed sign, they're literally doing fifty miles an hour even though it says thirty, because you don't have a very long time for where it says speed limit thirty and then the sign.
Some are still doing fifty at the Public Works building.
Oh, yeah, I know, but if you could move it east past that common acres, because that'll be city, in city.
Yeah, I would say probably not based on the topography.
Enforcement there too.
Yeah, just the, the spacing.
Well, now I'm not saying the speed limit thirty, I'm saying speed zone, that one, because there's literally very little time. You, you see the hill and then you crest it and there's the sign, if you just move the sign saying there's a speed zone ahead, I don't know.
Yeah, we can look into that.
It's a revenue generating opportunity.
I was gonna say, after you get done with the dogs and the bark and the-
Photo radar? Kinda like the hill in La Nomingo when you come to the bottom there coming south, that just-
It always kills me how it goes with thirty-five.
Right at the bottom of the hill, not that I've ever been over thirty-five there. Okay, any other questions on the trail easement agreement? Entertainer motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Ryan, do you have a second?
I have a second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thanks for getting that together, appreciate it Brandon, yep. Onto personnel, we have a leave of absence request from Anthony Fiersted from the fire department through the end of the year. I'll make the motion to accept that leave of absence request, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Attorney, we have two closed sessions. First one is not recorded, is the real estate one recorded?
Yes.
Okay, the first one is a update on our he's litigation and that will not be recorded. The second one will be a discussion on a potential real estate transaction which will be recorded, but we will close the meeting and invite everybody back in once we reopen the meeting. And we'll be not recording.